Meeting of the City of Milton Common Council to order Tuesday, June 16th, 2015, approximately 7:00 PM in a few seconds. And I would like confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice.
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Thank you very much. Our second item on the agenda is a presentation by the Teen Advisory Board for the Milton Public Library. And she comes with a crowd.
Yes. All right. Greetings and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Erin Swope and I am the President of the Library's Teen Advisory Board. We are a newly formed group at the library comprised of teenagers who are interested in having a positive impact on both the library and the community. Currently, we have 13 members, two new from grades seven to 10, and we do have one homeschooled student, so we have a nice diversity. Our first meeting was held on January 25th of this year at 5:30. We try to run our meetings according to the proper meeting format, so use Robert's Rules of Order, much like how the city council or the library board runs their meetings. We are still getting used to it, but it has been going more smoothly at recent meetings. As a part of our goal to run our meetings correctly and efficiently, we held elections for the positions of President, Vice President, and Secretary. I was elected President, Desiree Dorsey was elected Vice President, and Rachel Lenover was elected Secretary. We meet once a month, typically on the last Wednesday of each month, although for the summer, we're scheduling it according to what works best for everyone. And I also attend the library board meetings as a non-voting teen representative. We have, we've currently been focusing our efforts on the upcoming summer reading program. We have appointed a summer newsletter committee, of which the newsletter is in its final editing stages, and we are very excited to be hosting a mini golf program for students 15 and under. The event will be held on June 26th from 2:00 to 4:30 in the upper level of the library. The holes will all be designed and created exclusively by TAB members and will feature the superhero designs to go along with the theme of the summer reading program. For the summer reading program, TAB is also involved in some other events, such as a five-hour reading marathon, an interactive movie with Guardians of the Galaxy, and other do-it-yourself superhero crafts. As always, the library will be running a session of Little Owls Wise Owls, which is where a teen reader is matched with a younger reader, typically from ages kindergarten to second grade. Only this year, the program will be called Heroes and Sidekicks to go along with the superhero theme. The summer reading program runs from June 17th to August 21st and is open to kids from grades, from ages 11 to 17. For more information, stop by the library. And TAB will also be running a bake sale on the kickoff day, which is tomorrow, June 17th, at 1 o'clock. We are also currently planning on participating in the Fourth of July Parade, and we are in the process of becoming pen pals with some students from Japan. But besides just looking at the summer reading program, one of our goals is to become involved in the planning of the teen section in the upcoming library renovations. We have already begun to expand the graphic novel section and have begun fundraising for fun things for the teen section, such as interesting chairs, more books, and other fun decor. For example, a few Saturdays ago, at the library's Kim Closet fundraiser, we held a bake sale and ended up making $128.25. We really hope to make the library a destination spot for teens, some place where teens can work on school projects or just hang out. For instance, an inviting teen space could be particularly advantageous for middle schoolers because the middle school library isn't open that late into the night. In conclusion, TAB hopes to make a positive impact on the community and become an active role and play an active role in the library. We hope to create a space that will draw teens to the library, because after all, who knows what teens want better than teens? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's great. Number three is public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. And do we have anybody signed in?
Uh, yes.
Joseph Anam, Southwest Wisconsin Regional Director. For Ron Johnson, is that correct?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would just like to introduce myself. My name is Tasef Anam. I'm the Southwest Wisconsin Regional Director with the Office of U.S. Senator Ron Johnson. And in this role, I serve as Senator Johnson's representative in several counties of Southwest Wisconsin. And so I just wanted to come and introduce myself today. If, I'm the senator's point person in this part of the state, so if constituents from Milton, Wisconsin have any questions on, questions, comments, or concerns on any federal issue or anything pertaining to any federal agency, they can feel free to contact me. And I also have my business cards, which I'll be happy to share with anyone for that purpose. And also, while I'm here, I would like to share with you a brief update from the Senate. In this Congress, Senator Johnson is the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs. And under his leadership, the committee's mission is to enhance the economic and national security of America. With that, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and if you want a business card, just let me know. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Item number four on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there any?
I'll make the question.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or debate or anything? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Item number five is a public hearing on special assessments for curb and gutter replacement scheduled on the Parkview Drive project. The public hearing is now open.
The, the public hearing is to hear comments so that the council can determine if they are going to assess the curb and gutter improvements on Parkview Drive, the project in that area. Affected properties are eligible to pay up to half of the curb and gutter replacement charges for, for the project. And so that, that is what the, the public hearing is for, is just to hear comments from the residents that they may want to make on the possible assessment. And letters were sent to the property owners that would be affected by the assessment. Everyone on the street received an information letter, and then the people that would be affected by possible assessments were sent a second letter notifying them of the public hearing.
I never received one.
Oh, you didn't? Oh.
I received the first letter, but never the second one.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, okay. What was, yeah, because you told me the address was.
5:30 Parkview Drive.
Yeah.
Except they had the wrong address on the first one. They had 6:30 and.
Oh, all right.
But I get my utility bills right.
Yeah, you should have received one.
Never received the second letter.
All right. And, yeah, that would be, it would have been a mistake to not have sent you the, or just a missed, you know.
The only reason why I knew about it was my daughter was on Facebook themselves. It was a meeting tonight.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to come up and speak about it?
It's Robert.
Thank you. Could you give us your first and last name, please? Thank you.
My name's Robert Dujenski. I live at 5:30 Parkview Drive. I've lived there nine, nine years. The first year when I moved in, McKeon Street was done, and I was assessed for the whole 50% of that whole curb and gutter that wasn't pieced, that was all one piece. And then someone told me High Street didn't have an assessment when they had pieced together that.
The High Street one, we received federal grant money, and part of that was that, the latest High Street one that it couldn't, part of that grant money was, there wasn't an assessment allowed for that.
Also, there's, there's certain areas that gets treatment that don't have to pay the assessment.
Right. High Street was one that, that we couldn't do an assessment on. Otherwise, they would have. But that's the only one that I know of recently, like in the last, I'd say probably last 10 or 15 years, that hasn't had an assessment.
Well, I knew High Street was done after.
Right.
I moved in and after I had the 600, and I knew it was all, that was pieced in, and it was told to me that they didn't have to pay.
Yeah. Yeah, that was part of, when there was a lot of the federal money just for renovation projects, and that was part of that money, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, some of the curb and gutter that was replaced, I, snowplows got to do their job. It get busted up. I understand that. But then the property owners got to pay the consequence that it got hit by a curb, by a snowplow. I mean.
And we tried to just mark out, like just some of the worst ones or broken ones or some of the low ones. The ones on the corner, those are the, where the two corners intersect, those are the 100% city obligation for those, so.
Yeah, because I got the letter and I did call City Hall, and they told me my assessment at the time would have been $200. And now, since they put the concrete in for the first part of the curb and gutter, and I was mowing, I see there is actually more pink that goes all the way to the crosswalk, and it's pointed away from the crosswalk.
Okay. And I'll check on that.
Okay.
That would be a new, something new from today or yesterday or something.
Yeah, because I hadn't noticed until today.
Yeah, and some of the crosswalks, because of the accessible sidewalks, they were taking out some more, and that's because of those sidewalks, not necessarily a curb and gutter stormwater situation, so that goes with the sidewalk. So that wouldn't go with like a regular curb and gutter assessment.
Okay.
So yours should be pretty much the same as it was.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's, if it's anything that's a lot different, we try to notify whoever it was. You don't get a surprise where you think it's 10 feet, and then you get, you know, 100 feet. Yeah, we don't, we don't want to try to do that.
Okay. And then you're going to deal with the dirt between the terrace strip that's all racked in, is now actually higher, and it's going to cause a lot of water on the sidewalk.
Yeah, they've got a landscape company hired to, to redo the renovation, and, and yeah, we're trying to get so there's not water on the sidewalks either, so it doesn't trap.
Yeah, because right now, there, there's going to be more water than there was before.
Yeah, so, so that's what they're supposed to do, is take care of some of that stuff, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do you want us to send you a second letter, or are we good, Mark? Do we need to send a second letter?
No, I mean, your, your public hearing is, is right now, and although there was, perhaps it sounds like a new, a wrong number entered because you indicated it was sent to 6:30 instead of 5:30, as I recall.
That's what was on the letter, and the male knew who lived at 5:30, and she put a question mark by it and still sent it to us.
So.
But the, the part that's confusing is, they know how to get the utility bills to 5:30.
Well, as I say, and it sounds like perhaps there was a typographical error and, and it was labeled incorrectly, so as I understand, though, you, well, of course, you're here and have, have availed yourself of the, of the public hearing, which is appropriate. And I guess you've independently learned what the proposed assessment is, correct?
The first letter said that it would be 50% of the total project. I called City Hall.
Right.
And they roughly gave me a price that my portion would be $200.
Is that, that's, and that's accurate, so.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with that information, then the, the city can proceed if it chooses to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? All right, seeing no further comments, we will close the public hearing on special assessments for curb and gutter replacement scheduled on the Parkview Drive project. Item number six, new business, or I'm sorry, we're on item number seven, and we're going to do our team building, because I know you guys are, are waiting to hear about that. We're going to do our team building at the end of the agenda. We've decided to move that down since we had the public hearing. So, item number seven, new business. Discussion on possible action regarding Plan Commission item, approve the conditional use permit for Timber Hill Winery LLC, 1223 Stores Lake Road, Unit One.
And this item would typically be on the consent agenda, but we had a specific request from a council member to move it down from the consent agenda because of potential conflict. So with that being said, you know, the council could, could vote on this at this time.
Move to approve the conditional use permit.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Okay, there's a motion to approve the conditional use permit. Is there, anybody in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Maxine will abstain, and the motion carries. Thank you. Discussion on possible action on levying of special assessments for curb and gutter replacement on the Parkview Drive project.
I was just going to say, you have your, you know, you have the report that shows the affected properties, and this would be the, I guess, the discussion on if you were going to levy assessments or not. The assessment is 50% of replacement of curb and gutter for the affected properties.
And what have we typically done in the past when we've done road projects? Has it always typically 50/50?
If it's brand-new curb and gutter, you'd pay 100%.
Okay.
If it's replacement, you play, you pay 50%.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Someone.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
There's a motion and a second to levy special assessments for curb and gutter replacement on Parkview Drive project. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries.
Abstain.
Okay. Nancy is abstained. Okay, item seven C, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number 2015-11, Resolution Authorizing Special Assessment Against Benefited Properties for the Replacement of Curb and Gutter on Parkview Drive.
This resolution is for the payment structure for the assessments, and Dan might be able to explain if you have some questions more on that, on the resolution, but this is the resolution adopting the payment plan for those assessments.
Basically, I came up with, if the amount is under $500, we probably don't want to allow for a deferral just because of bookkeeping. When I looked at that list, the majority of the assessments were like $300 or less. And I thought five years seemed like a reasonable amount of time to, to allow people to pay it back, but I chose an amount of at least $500 each year, once again, just because of the administrative burden of remembering to put them on the tax roll every year. And the interest rate of four and a half percent is about 2% higher than what we borrowed for the Parkview project and the library project. That was the rationale. You are free to change any of those amounts or the interest rate. That's just the logic that I used.
So I kind of like the idea of 2% because it was an even number. I don't have any rationale for it.
You mean?
Or 4%? Yeah, just 4% instead of four and a half percent. But that's totally up to the council, whatever you'd like to pass as a motion or make a motion. Or you could do no deferrals, right?
Could.
Probably shouldn't, but.
I don't think that we can not. So I will make the motion to approve Public Works Resolution 2015-11.
In its entirety?
Yes.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so I didn't bring in my little flip chart to do the team building, so my question for everybody tonight, and Lieutenant Tasmore is thinking hard already on his answer. And we'll start with older person Zajak. The question is, if you could go anywhere on vacation this summer, where would you go?
Well, I guess I still need to get my kids to Disneyland, so I guess that would be where we'd go.
Okay. Maxine?
I would probably go to Disneyland.
There's a reason I sat you next to him. Al?
Wouldn't it be weird if I said I went to Disneyland with Maxine and Jeremy?
Not at all. Nothing shacks me anymore.
Okay. If I could go anywhere, I think I would go to Italy, because I've never been there, and it's beautiful, and I would like to go overseas again. Helena, where are you going on your honeymoon?
I think I would head south of the borders. I'd go to Mexico.
Great.
I'd like to go to Greece. Never been there, and I think it is beautiful.
How was Disneyland, the one in Florida or in California?
California.
That's the Florida one.
Disney World was in Florida.
Oh, good man.
Hey, sorry, fun-loving group. We're going to have some Disney characters.
I want to change my answer.
You are going to love our next team building exercise.
You know, that's kind of hard.
You're already going to Hawaii.
Well, but we, we can just stick with, we can stick with any place that my children are.
Okay. Great. We'll just say that. Lisa?
We're trying to bike more, so somewhere where, maybe Hawaii, where you could bike.
Hit your ride. It's group vacation time.
I've been to Hawaii, so.
Okay.
No, I won't come. I do want to take a trip to Alaska, because I haven't been there.
Oh, that's cool. Public Works, where are you going to take your group of guys now? Australia. Mark, are you getting in on this, or are you passing?
San Diego.
Oh, are you going to take your wife?
I did last week.
Oh, and this mail letter didn't get sent out. No. Dan?
Bora Bora.
Bora Bora. Oh, wow, pretty exotic there. All right, hey, that's it.
Dave.
Dave, oh, Dave. Dave?
I'm in Florida. What are you doing?
Oh, nice. Nice. Okay, so I think that was a pretty easy team building exercise. Now that we know where we're going to get our postcards from, we'll be looking for them in the mail. Any other general items? All right, our next meeting date is Tuesday, July 7th, at 2015, at 7:00 PM. Mayor and older person reports.
Nothing here.
The only thing I'd say is to remind them to take it easy going on Parkview Drive.
Okay.
Really, you know, they're still speeding. Yes, I'm moving right along.
Okay. All right. Teresa?
No.
Nancy?
Thank you.
Come on, Linda. You haven't used your quote of time talking yet tonight.
I, I just learned that because of the cancellation that there was at the gathering place for the concerts on the square, if it does rain, the events happen at the gathering place in the lower level. And the gathering place is having their pastries on the patio coming up June 24th. Parks and Rec Commission is still collecting donations for our Veterans Memorial. We can get, all of the information is on the city's website. It's, we are just incredibly happy at the amount of support that we have for these memorials and the monuments that we have out there. So thank you to everybody.
Great. Thank you. I wanted to report that the Milton Youth Coalition did a presentation at the Student Resource Officer, or School Resource Officer Conference in Appleton this morning. I went up there with Jerry Schutz and Carrie Winnicky from the high school, and we presented our entire anti-bullying and public awareness campaign to about 50 school resource officers, and it was very well-received. It was, it was a fun day, and it was nice to see so many school resource officers there. I will be at the library at 1:00 PM tomorrow, but I will let Lisa talk about that. And it's just nice to see everybody out enjoying our parks and the splash pad, and we're grateful for warm weather right now and no rain. Staff reports? Howie, do you want to go first?
Okay, the clean sweep was, according to Rock County, very successful down at the garage. They actually had to close off the amount of people that were coming in because they got, they collected that much, so, which was very good, you know, for, for the amount of pollution or whatever that's disappeared now. And then also, Parkview Drive, some of the updates on that. They are doing the sidewalks and curb and gutter. They poured a lot of it today. They pulled more out. If it doesn't rain, they kind of hope to be done with the majority of that by Thursday. One thing they did, again, move a little bit up on their schedule was, because they're trying to get this done as, really quickly, they may work on storm sewer Saturday, but they're going to bring in two crews, so that should be a one-day event for that. And that's mostly replacing some of the inlets and the boxes. The milling and the pavement are still scheduled for after 4th of July, so, so that's kind of the updates, you know, for that. And after the curb and gutter and sidewalks are put in, they're going to start restoration on the, you know, reseeding and things like that right away, too. So, so it's moving, you know, pretty fast to be done, you know, hopefully by the July 21st or deadline, so. Otherwise, yeah, that's, that's been the, the main thing, you know, that's been going on in the last week, so.
Chief of the Police Department, Acting Chief of Police, nothing? Director of the library?
As our teen board president mentioned, we do have summer reading starting tomorrow, and it's at 1:00. We have the police, fire department, and Public Works bringing vehicles, as well as the mayor speaking. We have Mercy Health Systems there. We have Humane Society of Southern Wisconsin going to bring some animals, giving away a lot of fun prizes and games, so we're really looking forward to it. Last year, we had about 700 people come the first day of summer reading, so.
Now you're just scaring me.
Yeah. That was for the whole day.
Okay.
Yeah. We're looking forward to it.
Thanks. No joint fire department. City clerk, deputy treasurer?
Yeah.
Finance director?
Nothing.
City administrator?
Next week, Monday, June 22nd, there will be the Community Visioning Charette held at Milton West Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Everybody from the public is invited. We've sent out a number of kind of press releases and things like that, but it's always good, good to get the word out as often as possible. So from 6:00 to 8:00 PM next week, Monday, June 22nd, at Milton West Elementary School, everyone is invited. It's going to be an event that will allow you to, it'll be an interactive event that's designed to be engaging and hopefully fun, that allow you to kind of talk about what Milton will, what your idea of Milton is. Milton will, what your idea of Milton will be in the next 20 years, and how you'd like to see Milton kind of grow and develop and, and change over the next 20 years. So we encourage everybody to attempt. And lastly, believe it or not, only, although it's only June 16th, Dan Nelson and I have already started to talk 2016 budget, so we're going to put together a schedule here in the next couple of weeks that we'll share with the council, because it's already getting to be that time. No rest for the weary.
Okay, Teresa, can you read the closed session personnel item, please?
Consideration of emotions from the closed session, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 1985, Fair One, receiving employment, emotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, or E. Chief of Police candidates.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and we'll now, we can be, we'll.